The workshop was funded by the EPA through a grant that was written through the center with the help of Scott Berry and Paul Jenkins. And we were one of 25 communities in the nation to receive this technical assistance support. So it was a nice feather in the cap for Raton. The goal of the workshop was to find ways to build momentum that we're seeing in downtown revitalization with great blocks. Of course, the sale of the Marquinhondo Building is another piece of momentum going on downtown. And my question in the grant and proposal was, how can we best capitalize on that momentum? And what resources can we bring to continue that momentum? So on Tuesday, the ninth, a consultant came in with, there was a bunch of, actually, we invited a bunch of state people from Santa Fe and Albuquerque to come up. And we did a nice tour of downtown. We got into the Marquinhondo Building, which was amazing and impressed a lot of people to see that great old building. We got into the Cook Building. We got into El Raton and the little apartments that are upstairs in El Raton, and then, of course, the Schuler. And one thing, the consultant, who's done 40 some of these workshops across the nation, he was very impressed with the physical assets that Raton has to work with. So very optimistic in that regard, what we have to use to move forward. That night, we had our community meeting, and we had a nice hailstorm right before the community meeting. And nonetheless, I think it was, it was a full house. There were like 60 people that showed up despite that, which again impressed the consultant and the people from the state to see all that great turnout for this event. He said he'd run events like this in a lot larger cities and had very small turnout. So another good sign was that turnout that night. Then the next day, we had about 15 or 20 people show up for the workshop, morning session, doing some exploration, and then the afternoon session, really defining some actionable events. And that was where I think we really pushed hard to get some work done. I think all of us have been to a strategic session where maybe not much comes out of it at the end. So the push was really to get some great results in the end, and I think we did that. It was some mixed results. Certainly, it's hard to get a lot done in a workshop that's compressed so tightly with such a big agenda. But I do want to point out a few key things that came out of it. One was, there was a placemaking team. So placemaking, this idea of making downtown a real community-centric place that attracts people downtown and engages the community. Jessica, who works with me, Jessica Barfield and Brenda Ferry led that team and came up with some great ideas, both from like, what are some ideas we can do quick and cheap and easy right away? And what maybe are some ideas that are longer term? So some of the quick and easy ideas, the tire planners, those tire planners that the shop on First Street has, to incorporate some tire planners on the main median on Second and then around town. Some lights on the trees to attract people down to First Street from Second Street and use some lights on Second Street as well. So those were a couple of the quick and easy ideas. I think there were some others, but those two were front and center. Again, just to add some, a little extra life and a little extra activity downtown. The longer-term activity, the consultant was really challenging us to figure out ways to slow down the traffic on Second Street. For those of us that walk Second Street and cross Second Street, the traffic is moving through there at a pretty good clip. And that's hard for businesses. People aren't driving slow enough to see anything going on in stores, and certainly walking is a little more hazardous. So there were some creative ideas brought forth as to how to slow down traffic on Second Street. We all understood it's DOT, and there's all these rules, and we have to go through a process, but there may be ways to address that. And then secondly, there was a little policy team that was Scott, myself, Scott Beckman from Santa Fe Economic Development, and maybe one or two others would sit in. And we came up with a couple of items. One was, Scott has mentioned before, is this idea of a fee, a penalty fee for owners of dilapidated buildings. This got a lot of agreement, a lot of nods around that table. It's something that I think is really important to get after, to help put a little penalty behind some of the maintenance of these buildings or lack of maintenance. The second item that we want to push aggressively on is finding a use and a plan for the Coors Building. So in fact, Scott Beckman from Santa Fe has a deep experience in this and has invited me down to Santa Fe. So I'll be down there in the next week or two. And Scott said he'd give me four, six hours of his time to walk through all the various avenues that we need to look at to attract the funding and to create a plan to put that Coors Building to use. And then finally, there were a couple of great representatives from the EPA, from Albuquerque office. And they were impressed to see that the Phase I and Phase II study had been done on this area across from the rail. And they're interested to see that and interested to see what could be done next on that. So I'll work with Jason and see how we can make that connection to that Albuquerque office. I think that was one of the big things I'd hoped for with this event and what I think we did achieve, is we got some people from Albuquerque and Santa Fe that had never been to Raton.
Sure.
Right? And they were impressed. They got the walking tour. They saw the spirit and the buildings. And they said, boy, give us a call. Get us involved. We have resources. We met this gal, Mandy Garcia from HUD. She was just all about it. She gave us a lot of great ideas and said, give us a call. We can connect you to funds that you never see. So that was a good experience with that regard as well, is those state contacts. So that's the quick summary I wanted to present to you. The center will call a meeting of the people that were involved in sometime early in June. We're waiting for the report to come from the EPA team in terms of the outcome of the meeting. And then we'll use that to gather the team again to make sure the ideas and efforts are being pursued. So that's what I've got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on with commission reports. Raton Water Works, Mayor Pro Tem Sagata, Commissioner Chavez.
The Raton Water Board met on the 16th, May the 16th. We discussed the Lake Malloy Dam assessment. Malloy is continuing to spill approximately eight inches over the spillway. The inflow was 673 acre-feet of water and has spilled 351 feet of acre downstream. Eagle Nest is currently at 39,000 acre-feet. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Berry, and myself did an onsite inspection of the dam last week. We discussed the USDA loan grant agreement approved to present to the city commission for tonight's meeting. Mr. Campbell will handle that in the agenda. And discussed and approved the proposed budget, the interim budget to be preserved, be presented to the city commission this evening. That's all I have.
Okay. Raton Public Service, Commissioner Giacomo.
Raton Public Service Board met on April 25th, April 26 at 5:30 p.m. The financial statistical information for April was presented by our Raton Public Service Financial Officer Sandy Chavez. Raton Public Service General Manager Robert Walther II gave his report on, an update on the Unit 6 Genmore Power Unit, which is scheduled to be commissioned on or around May 15th or 16th. All testing of the unit's systems are underway and are going well during the pre-commissioning period. Discussion of how and when the unit can be run and used and at what times still need to be negotiated with the, negotiated with the approved and approved with the main power supplier, Twin Eagle Resources. Mr. Walton stated that he and Karen Sterns of Engineering Analytics are working on a Facebook page, whereas its information can be sent out on Facebook during power emergencies. The board had a review and discussion of the 2017-18 interim budget. The city, the Center for Sustainable Community MOU was presented to the board at last month's meeting, has been revised and will be presented to the RPS board at the next board meeting. On May 4th, 2017, there was a special meeting held by Raton Public Service, two topics, discussion and approval of the fiscal year 2017-18 interim budget for Raton Public Service. And there was a discussion and approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Center for Sustainability Communities. That's all we got.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Bo.
We'd like to report that the Jim Bakker is on schedule. The pre-commissioning is wrapping up this week. Here to inform the commission tonight that we will be commissioning on May 30th. The Jim Bakker representative will be here on that day. The Facebook page this last weekend with our outage that we did had, had over 4,000 hits. So that's pretty successful in getting the word out. But here tonight, we just want to mention that we are going to have some planned and unplanned outages trying to get this unit to merge with our infrastructure. We're not sure exactly what's going to happen, but we're hoping that this can be very short outages. We've got to test this thing in multiple scenarios that are going to take place. We've got to run it in parallel with Twin Eagle and also in island mode. And we just want to make sure that this unit is, has been designed for what we need. So we ask that the public be patient with us, but we'll be posting on that Facebook page. Just as things happen, we'll get it out there immediately. If there's any questions or problems, we do have a meeting tomorrow night scheduled for 5:30 at our RPS board. If there's any questions with the public that they want to come and express those to us, we'd be more than happy to hear them.
Thank you. Bo. Park and Recreation Advisory Board, Mayor Pro Tem Sagata.
No report.
Senior Citizens Board, Commissioner Chavez.
Refer to Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Raton Senior Center met last Tuesday. We had visitors from the Non-Metro AAA out of Santa Fe regarding the possibility of Colfax County senior citizens taking on two more programs. Mora Valley Health Services in Mora has decided to pull out of their contract. They currently operate the Mora Senior Center and the Wagamoun Senior Center. With the success that we've had in the last few years, we were approached to see if we would consider doing that in the interim for at least a year. We just entered into a four-year agreement with the state. We're actually at the end of year one. After several visits and discussions and meeting with our board, developing budgets for both, we have decided to give it a go. That's where I've been the last two days. So Colfax County senior citizens will be operating the Mora Senior Center and the Wagamoun Senior Center. To kind of put everybody's mind at ease, that will not affect our budget. They come with their own budget, with their own contract. So the folks of Colfax County don't need to worry about services not being met. We will continue to meet those, and hopefully we will meet the ones going forward. It's a big undertaking, and we'll see how it goes.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Schuster.
The Planning and Zoning Commission meets quarterly. The next meeting will be July 20th.
Housing Authority, Commissioner Schuster.
They met on May 16th and are happy to announce that the summer food program is moving along. They'll be starting that soon. They're also providing assistance to the Maxwell Housing Authority, giving them guidance and kind of helping them progress in what they're doing. Is that it? That's it.
Airport Advisory Board, Commissioner Chavez.
No meeting.
ETZ Zoning Commission, Mayor Pro Tem Sagata.
Have not met.
Arts and Culture Board, no report. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, no report. Library Advisory Board, Commissioner Giacomo.
The Arthur Johnson Library Board met on Tuesday, May 16th by 30 p.m. The library now has ebook and audiobooks available throughout Overdrive, through Overdrive. Patrons with a library card can access a collection of database of material compiled by all the members of the New Mexico Consortium. The library has, the library now has functional remote access to the library catalog. Patrons can search the catalog, place reserves, check their own account, and see the status of material checked out and use, and also use Overdrive remotely. The meeting room is under renovation at this time. A new coat of paint has been applied. Next phase will be new flooring installed. The library history room has been closed off due to ongoing roof leaks that has caused damage to a number of books and also the hanging watercolor painting. The New Mexico Self Insurance Fund has set up, has set up Archuleta Restoration and Renovation from Santa Fe to start work on the issues. Statistical report for March 2017, money's collected by the library, $669.61. $20 were from donations, 147.21 was from fines, 464.40 was collected for copies made. There were $38 for memorials. Programs housed in the library was 14, attended by 77 persons. Story Arrow is held in the library with four, attended by 29. The statistical report for April 2017, money's collected is $868.69. That 144.90 was from fines, 518.79 was from copies made. There was $205 sent in for memorials. Programs housed in the library were 11, attended by 72 people.
Story Arrow is held in the library, three, attended by 22. That's all we got.
Thank you. ETZ Zoning Authority, no report. Financial Advisory Board, Commissioner Chavez.
The Financial Advisory Board met May 18th. We reviewed the April financial report approved to, for presentation to the city commission tonight. And we discussed and reviewed the fiscal year 18 proposed interim budget to be presented to the city commission tonight. That's all I have.
Okay. Approval of the May 10th regular commission meeting minutes.
This seemed in order to me, so.
Item 6C, first paragraph, need explanation on what is meant by, Mr. Sanz Lucho gave commission a 205. What does a 205 stand for? Sorry, there.
Which one?
That could be.
That's the, that's the fund name, the 205 launders tax fund.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
As amended.
We really didn't amend it. We just had to replace it. I'm sorry.
I'll second you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the regular commission meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on loan grant agreement between the USDA and the city of Raton for filter plant upgrades. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, this relates to the Raton Water Treatment Plant and just a few basics on that before I turn it over to Mr. Campbell. The water treatment plant was constructed between 1946 and 1948. Came online in 1948. That's about 70 years ago. And so what happens in that time is, number one, components become obsolete and periodically the city has updated certain components and certain processes in the plant. And then secondly, regulations change over that time. And that's something that we're dealing with, both obsolescence of certain components and meeting current regulations in the water treatment plant. This is something that Mr. Campbell primarily has taken the lead on and worked very hard to get to the stage where we're talking about this loan grant deal. And he is going to lay that out for you. Also, Geneva Chavez of Raton Water Works has put an extraordinary amount of time into this. This has taken a long time to get to this point, and I would like to recognize the efforts of that team. And so now I'd like to see if Mr. Campbell will come forward and give you more specifics on the, on the document and the project.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. This is a process that started in February of 2016. We actually have a resolution from this commission in June of 2016 to actually consider, which we had to have the public, actually had a resolution adopted to go down this path and try to attempt to get this funding. And since then, it's gone through some federal changes where the administrator of that office changed, where we had a meeting in January, and then it finally concluded in, at April of the document that you've got before you now. This is still an ongoing process. Same way we funded in '05-'06 with some grant funding combined with loan, a long-term loan was with USDA rural development money was the way the sewer plant was constructed in 2005, 2006. This project would consist of changes to the pretreatment system at the water treatment plant, the filtration system, a lot of changes to the chemical storage and distribution of the chemicals at the facility. A lot of this has to do with compliance issues that have changed over the years. Some of the physical plant structure, mostly sidewalks and concrete work. And most of all, on top of that, we have a project for SCADA, persistent control and data acquisition. A lot of that is our 24-hour monitoring of turbidity levels, chlorine levels, and everything else at the facility would make some changes on that. We have a current alarm system. This would actually be an upgrade to that. The thing to remember is, the plant was gone through construction, like I said, in the 1940s. Most of this equipment we're actually dealing with was actually equipment put in in 1984 as part of the Cimarron Pipeline Project, which when that job went in back then, and when actually a lot of the plant processes changed at that point in time. There's actually some of that same equipment that's being used today. We changed filter media and stuff, but a lot of the blowers and a lot of the equipment, most of the chemical equipment is all that aged, where you're looking at what's fast approaching 35 years of age. Almost always your equipment life on a plant structure are actually, most equipment is 30 years, is where EPA looks at it. This, where we're at right now, this is just the first step. It would actually be back before this commission. The water board did approve it, and we'd come here and each step would go through the water board and then to here. But we would end up having to have an ordinance, a bonding issue with a bonding attorney, same as we did on the sewer plant. We went through that funding process. This would go through it. The goal we would hope to have is to have a construction project that could be bid and then actually start in 2018, hopefully spring of 2018. Quite a bit of the water treatment plant work has to be timed out when we're not at peak flows. Peak flows today aren't what they were at one time in the past, but still, it's a lot easier to do construction when we can actually run off the tanks and try to do some things like that. The offer we have in place right now that's before us is, on, this is a two and a half million dollar project, would be 1.7, 1,754,000 in loan component at 2% interest, and it's actually consists of 829,000 in grant funds. At this point in time, that's been quite a bit of effort, but you're looking at one-third of the project being paid with grant funds. So as the first step, I would actually, you know, recommend that this approval go forward and try to get this project completed. It helps us get ready for the next 20 years of the water treatment plant.
And Mayor and Commissioner, I would concur with Mr. Campbell's recommendation for approval of the agreement. This has been several iterations, and there's not many places that the city of Raton can find grant funds in excess of $800,000. So it's a federal term. It's, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, but besides just a lot of work, the terms are good with the agreement.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept the agreement between the USDA and the city of Raton for the filter plant upgrades.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the loan grant agreement between the USDA and the city of Raton for filter plant upgrades. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sagata?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Deliberate an act on proposal award for the Schuler Theater Digital Film Project. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, you can, you may remember some time ago, the city of Raton did receive $100,000 in funding for this project through New Mexico Economic Development Department in their LITA funding program. So the city of Raton had requested cost proposals for the provision of the equipment and installation of digital film equipment at the Shore Theater. In addition, Main Street has obtained an additional $10,000 of funding for the project. So our total funding is, available funding is $110,000. We have received proposals. We received one proposal for the project, construction of the project, and that was submitted by a local firm, N&amp;K Electric of Raton. In looking at the proposal, and the proposal was reviewed by a committee of city staff and stakeholders. It appears that N&amp;K has performed similar services and on other projects, other theaters have experience with that. They, they know the equipment. A lot of the work is electrical, running various cables and conductors. So certainly they have the qualifications for that. The price is very close to the available funding. You can see the price in the packet is $114,000 and some change. And we have continued the review of the proposal through today. So I have not drafted a letter of recommendation to you, but I do represent the consensus of the committee. As a matter of fact, all committee members concurred with the recommendation to you to award this project to N&amp;K Electric as is submitted.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, it won't be any kind of problem to come up with that extra 4,000.
Well.
200.
Yeah, I think that we're going to have to probably look at reserves. There was some trust money for the Schuler, and the Schuler Restoration Board has that, and they were funding the professional services for the project. And I think when we get the number, maybe we propose to split that additional cost with them. That would be my proposal. Have not talked to them about that. We're planning on meeting with them and seeing, you know, how that goes with them. But I think right now, we would be looking at going to reserves for the additional funding. And I'll talk a little about the schedule. I think if we awarded this tonight, it's a couple of weeks till we get the contract documentation completed and issue a notice to proceed. And then when equipment is ordered, I would guess it's about four-week delivery time on equipment, and then probably about another four weeks on construction. And then if we throw a little contingency in there, it's, it's 10 to 12 weeks from now when the project is completed.
I think it's long awaited, so. I'll move that we award the Schuler Theater Digital Film Project to N&amp;K.
Electric.
Electric Company.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to award the Schuler Digital Film Project to N&amp;K Electric. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2017-25, approval of the April 2017 financial report.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening is our April financial report. You will see that as of April 30th, our available cash balance is just a little over a million. It's 1,4,255.84. The gross receipts received in the month of May is still showing a 5.06% increase per our year-to-date per budget. So let's see, our actual percentage, so the budgeted percentage was 91.66 and the actual is 96.72. So that's how I come up with that percentage. Since we are approaching the end of the fiscal year, we are going to be working with department heads. We're hoping to go through. We're hoping to go through those outstanding purchase order reports and really clean up any encumbrances that may still be there, like for open POs and things like that, so that when I give them financial reports the first week of June, we really know what our true balances are in most of our line items, especially for those various grants that need to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. So we're going to be working with our department heads on that. Also, we still are operating below budget in the general fund. Some of that is because we have not and will not be doing the $100,000 transfer out of the solid waste for the various alley, street improvements. So that money is budgeted in the general fund, but we will not be transferring it or expensing any of it in this fiscal year. Also, I think that gross receipts, if you'll remember, this time last year, we were showing about a 4% decline in GRT. So obviously, the increase that we've seen this year, some of that is making up for the shortfall that we had in the last fiscal year. So, other than that, we did receive a property tax check this week from Colfax County for about $38,000, and we'll probably get another one in the month of June. But other than that, with the exception, I think, of the Colorado Division of Wildlife lease payment, there's not a lot of revenues still left to come in for this fiscal year. Is there any questions that you have on our financial report?
Make a motion, approve Resolution 2017-26, Budget Adjustment Number 13. Oh, one, sorry about that. Resolution 2017-25, Approval of the April 2017 Financial Report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2000, Resolution 2017-25, the April 2017 Financial Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2017-26, Budget Adjustment Number 13, Fiscal Year Ending 17.
Mayor and Commission, you should have a revised copy of the budget adjustment in front of you rather than the one that's in your packet. I did make a couple changes since Friday. The Raton Water Works has a Water Trust Board loan that they would like to pay that off in this fiscal year. So we had only budgeted $10,000, but the actual payoff of that loan is $12,041. So they will be paying that one off. They will also be paying another Water Trust Board loan off, but the payoff on it is less than what we had actually budgeted. So this is the only one that would require a budget adjustment, but we will be making that payment to NMFA by June 1st. So I would request that you allow me to add that in this evening's budget adjustment. And then also, so the way that payment is made, it hits the capital projects, the money coming in from water, then we issue the payment out to the debt service, and then we apply it to the principal and the admin fee. So those are the line items that will be affected by the budget adjustment. Also, the police department came today and was requesting a line item adjustment to move some monies from the police dog expense that aren't needed for this fiscal year into their equipment maintenance line item. The other line items, I've provided some explanations there. The juvenile justice grant, those were some expenses from June of the previous fiscal year that were expensed in July and reimbursed in July by the CYFD program. So I'm requesting that adjustment. The others are just line item adjustments.
I'll move to approve Budget Resolution 2017-26, Budget Adjustment Number 13, FY17.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-26, Budget Adjustment Number 13, Fiscal Year Ending 17. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2017-27, Disposal of Surplus Property Dispatch Equipment.
Mayor and Commission, this is a request. The Raton Dispatch Center recently was donated to 911 consoles for our dispatch center. So now we have the desk, it's a desk, it's called a console, but now we have ours that Colfax County has expressed a desire that they could use this in their new jail that's being constructed. So we're requesting this evening to surplus that to Colfax County, which would be a donation. And of course, we would send this to Department of Finance for their approval as well. And it is with the understanding that the equipment is, as is, no warranty, it is used.
Make a motion, approve Resolution 20-17-27, Disposal of Surplus Property Dispatch.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-27, Disposal of Surplus Property Dispatch Equipment. And it's a 911 console, and it will be donated to Colfax County for the new jail. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on Recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, MOU between the City of Raton and the Raton Chamber.
Hi, everyone. You all got in your packets some information from the chamber. I wanted to come and address you. I'm sure you've heard the chamber's undergone some dramatic changes over the last few months, and we have taken on a new direction. The packet that you have in front of you contains some really exciting information, so let's get right to that. Melissa Grubelneck is our new tourism coordinator. She's doing a wonderful job. She and I both went to the Governor's Conference on Tourism. At that conference, it was announced by Albert Leffler. He is the main CEO and owner of Ticketmaster, the refurbishment of 2926, that is a steam engine train in Albuquerque. On the front of your packets is a photograph of 3751. It is a sister train to 2926 that is currently operating in Arizona. 2926 is now entering the operational phase. They've already tested the engine, it's good to go, they've completely refitted it, the value of the engine is currently set at $2.2 million. They are planning to run this train on the track from Albuquerque up through Las Vegas and then into La Junta. Guess where that goes by? Us. So it was really exciting to us, and we really want to get into the operational phase and encourage them to go ahead and extend the route all the way to Raton as quickly as they can. They are just now doing contracts with the railroads. This steam engine actually pulls Amtrak passenger trains, and so, and it will be 100% tourism. So it will bring a lot of people up from Albuquerque, Santa Fe, up through Las Vegas, where they are renovating the Harvey House. And of course, I know the city has planned over the next few years to start looking at the depot and those renovations, and I'm sure this type of project will certainly play into that. So the chamber really wants to focus on getting into, on the ground floor of the operational phase and working together with the powers that be to encourage this train to get here as quickly as they can. They are going through La Junta because that is the current operational Y turnaround. And of course, it would take people up through the pass, which we think is a huge benefit. We were, we approached Mr. Leffler after he spoke. He was very excited to see someone from Raton because he really hasn't had the chance to talk to anybody from here. So they're eager to speak to us, and we certainly want to do that and encourage that sort of development. I think it would certainly, certainly benefit us in many, many ways. But those are just some photographs to let you kind of know what's coming. This is the first time they've announced it, and first, we'd heard of it, certainly, and I know a lot of you haven't heard of it either. So just so you know, you will be hearing about it. If you want to go and look and see all the renovation that they have done on 2926, you can do so at 2926.us on the internet, and all of their photographs are there. If you want to be involved in the current renovations or what they are doing, they love volunteers, so please, please feel free. Melissa and I learned a number of different things at the tourism conference that I think will benefit us tremendously. One of the main things that we learned is they are changing a little bit about the way they do their co-op program for advertising. You all have seen the New Mexico True Ads, which Raton has zero of, or nearly zero of, and we want to tap into those funds. They have changed the funding because previously, they required the entity to pay 100% upfront for the advertising, and then later, way down the road, when the advertising ran, the state might send you a check when they got around to it. They have changed that where all you have to pay is your 50%. So that allows a lot more accessibility, especially given our timelines for a small entity like Raton to access some of those funds. Melissa and I put together some examples of ads that are more in line with that type of advertising. They tend to approve advertising that's more in line with their New Mexico True themes. So you could see some samples. One of the things we don't have a lot of is really good photographs from, that we could use for this advertising. The city has been wonderful to offer a lot of the photographs that the city has had taken professionally, but the chamber is going to be running a photo contest as well. We want to have amateur photographers who will send us digital images that we can push out on Facebook and social media and get our campaign going, and then professional photographers who will give us things that are very, very specific to Raton, because as you can tell, these are just stock photos, but are very specific to our area that give us a very professional, polished look. So that's one of the first things that we're doing, but that gives you an idea of where we're headed as far as creating advertising and awareness for Raton. We're here tonight to talk about the MOU, and for you to understand this MOU, I kind of want to give you some data and some numbers on where we're at as far as the visitor's center. Since September the 24th, 2016, chamber volunteers have assisted over 7,000 tourists. We expect that number to grow exponentially. It's already ramped up a lot this last week tremendously. More than 43 people have volunteered at various times at the VIC since September the 24th, contributing 3,541 hours of labor. Estimated value of those donated hours stands at $83,425. We're estimating the volunteer hours that will be donated by the chamber via the VIC to be approximately 500 hours per month in the winter, 750 hours in the summer, that comes out to 7,500 hours yearly. This puts the estimated dollar value at $176,700 per year that this MOU is in effect. The chamber also, you've got a photograph there of some furniture the chamber was donated to us, and now is in the VIC. It's very Western, gives it a very classy Western look, and that's part of what we really want to upgrade, the look of the VIC, to be very classy. We already get a lot of compliments on it as it is, and we want to get some more. People really do like to come here, and so that's been very popular as well. The chamber recently was involved in two events, the DoTERRA Conference as well as the Lions Convention. The numbers for those are in your packet as well. The total attending the DoTERRA Conference was 229 people, 109 of those from Raton, and the remaining 120 were from various areas, mostly Colorado Springs, Albuquerque, and of course, Texas. Lions Convention, which was May 5th through 7th, 147 Lions attended. Mike Rattell had 100% occupancy made up completely of Lions and Lions only from the 4th through the 7th, and of course, many other state-in-the-area hotels or NRA. The tourists that the Lions went on were Catuline Volcano, St. James Hotel, Philmont Scout Ranch, Sugar Creek Canyon State Park, and the Mendala Center. The Lions are planning to return. The reason I really wanted to include those was to let you know the direction of the chamber has fundamentally changed. If we are going to do the VIC and do it correctly, then that is where our volunteers need to be. We cannot have volunteers at VIC and have volunteers doing events. We do not have the bandwidth for that. So we have decided that we are going to start really focusing on bringing more groups like DoTERRA and Lions to Raton during our off times. We want to really kind of step back from what has been historically a competitive environment for city events and be much more supportive. We want to support Main Street and the events they are doing and make them bigger events. We want to support the museum, couldn't think of it, sorry. We want to support the rodeo and make them successful and profitable and self-sustaining. That is the role of the chamber, not to compete with people, but to take this supportive role. We also want to start gathering data, data on the true economic impact that these events have. That data is what is going to propel economic development, because right now, a lot of people, as you heard Jeff say, and as many of you have heard before, are interested in investing, opening a hotel, some kind of business in Raton, but we have no real data to give them, and it is truly a hindrance. That data can tell us a lot about what to do and what not to do. One of the people we talked in depth with at the Governor's Conference was the tourism coordinator at Taus. They recently had the Alabama Shake Concert, and they attracted 8,000 people. And she was very honest in saying that was a bad thing. It overtaxed their city tremendously. The blowback from the community was quite harsh. It basically shut the city down. It cost the city so much in police, fire, and they had so many issues that they could probably only do something like that every two to three years. Additionally, it completely maxed out their inventory of hotel rooms. A lot of people stayed here in Raton to go to the Alabama Shake Concert. So we really want to develop partnerships with our other, other smaller communities or even mid-sized communities because we do have hotel rooms. One of the issues they had was, once they had all those people, they had hoteliers interested in coming and building in Taus. Well, if you've read the Taus Building Code, you can see the issues. They cannot get the deals done. We don't have that problem, at least not near to that level. So we want to take advantage of other people's learning and their mistakes and what they see they could have done better, and use that to make Raton the destination place for people to stay, even if they're going to things in the area that aren't necessarily Raton events, that our lodger's tax increases because of it. We want to take advantage of every single thing. So that's where we see the chamber going, is really enhancing the overall business environment, bringing our occupancy rates up across the board, whether we have an event in town or not. So we have more money coming in, and therefore, it's an upward spiral instead of a downward spiral. So if you all have any questions on the MOU, I'm happy to answer those.
And Mayor, I'll just check in with you as well on the MOU. The revisions include removal of the references to state tourism that was in the past MOU. There was a reference that it would be a requirement for two events the chamber would sponsor, and I agree with Dee that we're probably better off looking at bringing in small groups, small conventions of a size that we can handle. That 100 to 150, I think, is pretty good for Raton now, and I think we'll have the ability to grow. But I think that's one of the best forms of tourism is an event like the Lions Convention, and there's a lot of them out there. And I had recently attended the watershed and dam owners coalition meeting, and we talked about that the last meeting. There were, there was a report on the first day about improvements to Lake Dorothy from our engineering analytics consultant, and then second day, there was another presentation regarding Lake Malloy, and that group was very interested in coming to Raton also in two years. They had kind of penciled this in, so I think there's interest out there. I would concur with, or give you my recommendation in favor of the MOU, and I would tell you that the MOU was considered by the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board in their last meeting, and they gave a positive recommendation as well to the Commission.
Okay. So we're striking 15? Be involved in recruitment and support of at least two significant group meetings?
That's correct, Mayor. The agreement now would discuss promotion of events like the Lions Convention, or not events, small group meetings.
Well, I know I've been very impressed with the direction the Chamber has been making recently. I think they're working really hard, and I'm really proud of the work they're doing, and really pleased with the work that's happening. It's beginning to look a lot more like a Chamber should be functioning.
I would say that the ambassadors really showed up in strength at the Lions Convention as well, did a lot of the work, really appreciated that, helped with the success of that convention.
Yes, they were also, not to interrupt you, I apologize. They were also wonderful at the Run for the Wall. They coordinated cookies and coffee, and there was a lot of coffee that morning, it was cold. And so it turned out beautiful. If you look out on Facebook, we're pushing those photographs out on Facebook, and that's been very positively received.
Along with Commissioner Schuster, her and I have been involved the last three or four months with the Chamber, and it's just been so much, I'm looking for the right word here. It's so much more comfortable to be at the board meetings. You can actually see something being accomplished, so I commend Dee and her new board, and look forward to working with Chamber now. In the past, I've kind of been a thorn in the side. I've encouraged-
That's exactly, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that for the first time in the past three years, we actually seem like we have a Chamber that is functioning in the way it should be. It wasn't happening in the past couple of years, and so you're heading in the right direction, and kudos to the bunch of you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. We are, we've got some really neat things planned that I think you all will enjoy seeing, and things just like our visitor guide that just came out, and it's just a first start. We've already received feedback from Lodger's Tax Board and some of the community members, and we will be using that feedback to improve it the next time we do it, so we're already looking to improve those things, and that's really our focus, is how can we do things better, not just keep doing the same old things. We want to do things better, use the money better, get a better return on investment, and put more people in our hotels and get more money in through our lodger's tax.
I'll move to approve the MOU between City of Raton and the Raton Chamber.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU between the City of Raton and the Raton Chamber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you state your name for the record?
Dee Burks.
Thank you. Deliberate an act on fiscal year 18 funding request for Raton Main Street.
Mayor and Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I believe in your packet you have a letter from Raton Main Street President Diana Sanchez with the request for your consideration of a $500 per month increase on the city's contribution to Raton Main Street. Pretty well explained in there as far as the history and the progress that Raton Main Street has done for the Main Street District as well as Raton as a whole. One of the paragraphs in there, within the last 12 years, we have secured plenty of grants and developed lots of partnerships with the city for various projects in the historic Main Street District, so. Sorry Diana couldn't be here this evening, she's on her way to Spain, so I drew the short stick, so here I am. Shall I stand for any questions?
I think in the budget, didn't we put down 34,000?
That's what they currently receive, so if you were to award the full amount of the funding, then you can increase it, or decrease it, whatever you approve more than that. But it is currently under 34,000.
We're requesting an increase of $6,000. And also to keep in mind that we do have one director for Raton Main Street and our Arts and Cultural District as well.
Wasn't there, don't we have to at least approve 36, or was there like a percent?
There's a 10%. Could you explain that to us?
Yeah, Ms. Schuster, in the agreement that we issued with New Mexico Main Street, they make a recommendation that the local Main Street is funded by the city in the amount of $35,000 for our population, and last year, we had, the Commission had approved a $34,000 annual funding, and that equates to basically the 10% administrative fee of the gross amount of lodger's taxes collected. Now lodger's tax has been a little stronger than that during this year, we're ahead of that, but that amount did coincide with the budgeted revenue, about 10% of the gross. If you consider the full funding of 40K, of course, the 10% is probably not going to cover that. You would be funding that out of a non-promotional side.
Ms. Antonucci provided us with six years of data, and I think you take the six-year average, and it comes out like $348,618 a year, or something like that. That's just, my concern would be going above the money that's going to be available, as history shows.
Right.
Well, looking it over, I initially felt that not all three of the things that had come before us, is that I was, my opinion is that we should fund all three of them. With the statement going along with that is that you'll have to show us, before you come before us the next time, that you'd have to show us actual results of how it's worked out. You know, I personally would not like to see us give the full amount and then say, okay, we got them, and then next year we'll ask for more, but that's, in my, this is just my own opinion, is I was for funding all three of them, and-
Mayor Mance? I'm sorry, Commissioner Chavez, I believe that with all of our events and things that we're doing, we do, we have that tracking system in place when it comes to funding and lodging and things like that, that we provide to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, so we can definitely get you copies of those.
I think we've kind of, with others, we've required not only to the lodger's tax, but also-
Sure. Because I believe it is very important, and that's the whole part of the funding and the organizations, whether it's the Chamber or the museum, to show that what we're doing is making an impact and to become, you know, not having the lodger's tax become a crutch and start, you know, balancing off as far as a self-sustaining.
I don't think there's a question of whether or not you deserve or need the money that you're asking for. It's just, can our budget-
But at the same time, at some point, these organizations need to start becoming more self-sufficient.
Absolutely.
We're not in the business to provide the funds for all of these organizations to operate, and as Mr. Chavez stated, rarely do we see any numbers on how this is helping.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not-
Yeah, no, definitely.
Not bashing Main Street or anybody?
No. They do exist, and we can get those to you.
They do exist where we work.
Absolutely, and Main Street is continuing to take on different events and different committees and different projects, so it's not something that we're continuing to do the same thing. We're progressively, in addition to working with different projects and partnerships.
And furthermore, with the, if our budget or the economy is bad next year, and obviously, there's no way that we would even consider, or we shouldn't consider, the full funding or something like that.
Absolutely.
That's why I wanted to do all three of the ones to the max, because we are there at that point, so that's just, that's my opinion on this.
And the other issue too, as Mr. Berry pointed out last meeting, we have got some issues with the convention center that need addressing, and in my building, we are dealing with aged boilers, and we have now come across another problem, which is probably going to double the cost. We didn't anticipate that. I think we need to be kind of prudent in leaving some money that we can address those needs at that convention center. If we're going to start bringing these conventions into town, we need a facility that's going to be operable.
That's my, just my opinion.
Let me ask a question to Ms. Antonucci then. If we funded all three of these, how much would we have left in the fund, ballpark?
Those were some of the figures that we went over at the last meeting.
That's me, yeah. It was about 40,000.
Forty something.
Forty six.
About $27,000.
Okay, that's fine.
And that was just based on my estimates of what we anticipate as a beginning cash balance as of July 1st, so it was 47,458.
And that was, that was one of the things-
Yeah, I do.
That was, that was one of the things that I looked at too, is I wanted to make sure there was enough for not only signage, welcome to Raton, which we've talked about, and the update on the convention center. And obviously, I don't want to break it down so that we'll just eke and buy, but if we can swing at this, that would have been my recommendation tonight.
Also the depot.
Food for that. Yes.
How about us looking at the percentage, like 80%? Give 80% to what they're asking for.
80% of their request.
Of their 40, yeah, which would put it at 36,000. I think I did that math last time.
Did you get some figures there, Jaco, of what it would be?
Yeah, 32,000.
32?
Oh.
On the 40,000, 80% would be 32,000.
Yeah, that's about right.
Somehow I came up with, maybe I was looking at 90%.
Well, I would be in favor of giving them what they received last year. I would, I would, Mr. Chavez, I would like to give everybody everything, but I'm trying to be progressive here with our building, and if we're going to truly try to be a convention and destination center, we need to take care of those facilities and go from there.
Yeah, and if the train project goes through, we need a depot that's presentable also.
And some water valves too.
Water valves?
I think, how about if we went 90%, which is 36,000, that's just 1,000 more than last year, or no, 2,000 more than last year.
I will make a motion that we award them 35,000, which is the recommendation from the state Main Street.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second toward Raton Main Street, $35,000 for fiscal year 18, 2018. We have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
No.
Mayor Forte Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Deliberate an act on fiscal year 18 funding request for Raton Arts and Humanities. They've requested $18,000. Is that what we, I don't remember.
I think so.
It was 50% of whatever everybody was asking for, that's all I remember.
That was 11.
They say they're not in good shape. This is through May, but their financial statement's showing a $31,722.2 profit. And this is just P and L.
Make a motion, we award them 80% of what they're requesting, which would be 14,400.
I'll second that one.
14,400, you said, Jaco?
14,400.
We have a motion and a second toward the Raton Arts and Humanities Council, $14,400 for fiscal year 18. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Forte Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes. Deliberate an act on fiscal year 18 funding request for Raton Museum.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I'm just here to answer questions that you may have, since we did, I did present at the last meeting. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review the proposal in a little bit more detail, and if you have any questions, I stand here for possibly answering them.
I first looked at your financial statement, I thought that you made a profit of what, like $16,000 or-
Correct.
Seventeen thousand, something like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Then add back in the depreciation, which was 19, so that makes you look really good at 36,000.
It does.
Except you had that one big donation, where you would have been in the red.
Correct. Exactly. And that donation that we did receive from the state was obviously wonderful to receive, but it's a one-time gift, and it's not something that we normally have. I think, as I stated at our last meeting, is our normal proceeds are about half of what that actual gift was. So currently, what we're running, and I had planned to bring you a profit and loss that, you know, went through the end of March, and I apologize, I didn't get that done, but we had around $27,172 in actual revenues that came in, part of that obviously being lodger's tax that was awarded last year, which usually what, historically, when the museum has received lodger's tax funding, or funding from the city, which isn't on a, hasn't been on a regular basis, we have generated at least- a, hasn't been on a regular basis, we have generated at least fifty to sixty percent on top of that for our operation. So, we, to date through March, had received thirteen thousand from lodger's tax and generated a total of twenty-seven. So, it was about fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty.
Our expenses pretty much hold really, you know, true to form. I think, you know, one thing that I would like to point out is that the capital cost to the city for that building and the facility doesn't exist.
Right.
That is all owned, maintained, and taken care of by the museum. So, that one-time gift is extremely helpful when we need to do maintenance and repair on that building. We purchased it through the generosity of the community and have, you know, renovated and done all of those things and maintain it and operate it out of the funds that we received throughout the year.
Kathy, what are some of the uses that you're going to, I mean, thirty-five thousand, it's a chunk of change.
It is.
What are we looking at doing?
Well, I think, you know, a lot of that, what it helps us do is maintain a facility that is tourist-related, draws in people into the community, gives them an opportunity to experience the history, the cultural history, and that aspect of Raton and the surrounding area. So, it is, I mean, we do events, we have exhibits that, last year, we had four separate exhibits that we put on that round for anywhere from two to, or not two, six to eight weeks. And primarily, we look at exhibits going up and running at the max, eight weeks at a time. And then you have downtime, getting it straightened back up, everything put away, and then putting another exhibit back up. So, traditionally, we're anywhere between five to four separate exhibits that draw in people throughout the year to look at that and draw in people off the street and out of the tourist-related activities. If they're in town for NRA, they come in. Philmont takes a huge advantage of the facility, and they come in, they bring, you know, additional, the youth, I guess is the proper term, that are experiencing, Philmont come and experience Raton, whether it's when they're coming on trains, but they actually do actual tours that come in. We offer tours to different organizations that do that professionally. Last year, we were a part of that group that came up for two different times that brought, at that time, they were called mystery tours, so to speak. I think Centours was the trade name. So, we, you know, offered that, and they came in. We gave them walking tour brochures, gave them history about downtown area and how, you know, who we are. So, those are the type of things we do, and it's on an ongoing basis. We have, again, our Facebook page and our web page that attract people, and we get comments, people looking for ancestors and/or, do you know that this happened? And we do the research and find out and go from there. So, a lot of people come, once they find out something about either our history and/or they're trying to track their ancestors to a certain degree, they're coming back again saying, or coming to Raton wanting to find out more about it.
Do you do any grant writing, or is that, are there any grants available to?
Yes, we have in the past. It's not something, again, unfortunately, for history museums. There are grants out there if we want to put on a program and an actual specific exhibit. But for maintenance, operations, keeping those type of things going, those dollars are not, not really out there for grant, you know, for grants available for that purpose. A lot of them say, okay, you want to do this specific project. And, I mean, that's great, but you're taking all those resources and those grant dollars to funnel just into that project. It doesn't help maintain the fact that we keep the building open, operational year-round, and, you know, supply other programs and whatnot to the community.
Right.
So, that, it is difficult. There are some elsewhere, but as far as operations, and, you know, the cooperation that we receive from state entities, either museums and/or other historical organizations, we've been able to bring in a lot of projects. And, you know, that collaboration, luckily, hasn't really been cost prohibitive because Smithsonian has their small-town exhibits that are, you know, in play, New Mexico Humanities Council. So, we're able to bring in programs at a minimal cost. But then again, yeah.
Yeah. That's great. You guys are doing a good job, I think.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to award the Raton Museum eighty percent of what they're requesting, which would be twenty-eight thousand.
I think I'd rather see us give them at least thirty.
That sounds good.
Thirty thousand. I don't know what percentage that is, but.
But that doesn't make any difference on a percentage.
Make a motion of it.
We have a motion on the floor.
There's already a motion.
We have one motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor to, that they would receive eighty percent of the thirty-five thousand they were asking for, which, Doc, this is twenty.
I'll withdraw my motion.
You're withdrawing your motion, okay?
In that case, I'll move that we award them thirty thousand dollars to the Colfax County Society of Art History and Archaeology.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to award the museum thirty thousand dollars. Here of a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes.
Thank you. Deliverate an act on resolution two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-eight, adoption of fiscal year seventeen dash eighteen interim budget, City of Raton, Raton Water Works and RPS.
Mayor, Commissioner, if I could start this conversation, and then I'll turn the floor over to our city treasurer, Michael Ann Antonucci, and she'll be able to answer any questions that you might have in regard to the draft budgets that you have in front of you. She'll also talk about the schedule and required submittal times that we're looking at to get a budget submitted to Department of Finance Administration. I'll just be brief and tell you that what we've put together and brought you is a, an aggregate of twelve point eight million dollar city budget. You also have a budget for Raton Water Works and a budget for Raton Public Service Company in your packet. Our general fund budget is proposed at about four point seven million dollars. As we've said, the biggest components of the budget are personnel and personnel-related expenses. And what we're proposing is that we remain essentially static on personnel. I think if anything, we'll probably consolidate a position or two due to retirements. We're certainly not looking at expanding the personnel in any of our areas. So, I think the budget would reflect that. We have also estimated that we'll see a little bit of softness in GRT, and that's related to a smaller level of construction that we anticipate during the year. That's really a projection. I think we're seeing some strength in our retail service in town. That's reflected in what we see from gas tax collections, been fairly strong throughout the year. And discussions that we have with businesses in town, it seems like we have some strength there, and we would expect that to continue. But we are looking at a smaller level of construction, and so we've been sort of conservative on our grocery receipts tax projections on that. And with that, I'll let Michael Ann talk about specific elements of the budget, and let the commission make comments or ask questions.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and Commissioner, I guess, two weeks ago, we presented to you a draft budget. So, obviously, the actions that you took this evening on lodger's tax will be changes to this document that we're presenting to you this evening. So, in addition to those changes, we can still, this is our last opportunity to make any changes this evening before we do submit this to the state. The deadline to submit an interim budget is June 1st, and that is a statutorily required deadline that we must meet. So, from the time that we met two weeks ago till now, we've made some slight revisions, and I kind of went over some of those with you at the last meeting, mainly to update personnel schedules since that is where eighty percent of our budget lies. Those budget schedules need to be as accurate as possible. So, I've worked with our payroll clerk to update some of the longevity and figures that she gives me to incorporate those into the personnel schedules. We did budget a five percent increase for our health insurance, but as I reported, that increase will be a little bit closer to a three point three percent increase. But we would like to kind of leave that cushion in there because as we have turnover in positions, those costs can fluctuate drastically depending on if somebody is just an employee only versus a family plan. So, we kind of see those swings throughout the year that we can't really anticipate. So, I prefer to leave a little bit of a cushion there, just because we can't anticipate some of those costs. I did adjust the estimated residual payment that we'll be getting from Raton Water Works to reflect the same amount that they've budgeted. Originally, I had a hundred thousand in the draft, but it's closer to about seventy-four thousand. So, I've adjusted those figures. And of course, you know, the decline in GRT that we're projecting as well. Other than that, as the city manager said, I did make some changes as a result of retirements and some vacancies in a few departments. So, we shifted a few things around on the personnel schedules. But other than that, I really didn't make too many changes. I noticed on the draft budget that my transfers in and out didn't balance. It was off by a hundred and eighty dollars. So, I've corrected that. It was actually the transfer that we make out of the solid waste for the percentage of my salary, our payroll clerk and our IP. We do a percentage of that is transferred. And so, that was adjusted slightly. And I had to adjust that in the general fund and the solid waste. So, I fixed that imbalance, and everything's in balance now. I also did, based on our conversations and meeting with the city manager, we did update the street improvement fund. Some of those projects are just, at this point, just merely applications for the co-op and the MAP that we haven't necessarily been awarded for. But in those resolutions, we did commit to the matching funds. So, in order to show that in this budget, I just went with what we were requesting as part of those applications. And we'll adjust that later on, once the actual awards are made. And the same could be true of the airport project until those funds are actually awarded, but we've still committed ourselves to those matching funds. So, what you'll see on the general fund is we're submitting a balanced budget, but the eighty thousand dollars as a transfer is for those airport project matching funds. So, we are proposing that that come out of the current reserves of the general fund to cover those matching funds. It is a one-time hit to the budget. Scott, did you want to discuss at all any additional capital outlay?
Well.
That is something that is not included.
Yeah. Mayor and Commissioner, we have a number of capital outlay possibilities on the schedule throughout the year. And the budget may not reflect everything because some of that is waiting on applications for grant funding. And, you know, sometimes, even if a project is funded, it's, it may go through an environmental review. And, you know, take the depot, for example, I can see doing some construction on the depot during this budget year. There are a number of steps that we have to go through now in order for that to happen. And certainly, we plan on that during the year. But as far as a larger project, it looks like it may be out there past this year. And that's true of some other projects as well. So, I think that we try to keep track of all of those proposals and bring them to you, possibly in a bar throughout the year as they, as they happen. And we get some of these clearances, and we get grant agreements and those kind of things. So, the projects that we've made commitments to, as Michael Ann has reflected, we reflect in the budget, and we'll have to see how some of those play out.
That was my only question, Liz. I thought you needed a new car, and we needed new police cars, and I couldn't find anything in the budget.
Right, right. So, on the.
The police cars, we're actually going to pursue financing through NMFA. We are still waiting to find out with the LEPF funds and some of the actions taken during the past legislative session, how that affects those allotments for the next fiscal year. But we would certainly want to pledge the LEPF funds to the purchase of some new police cars.
And I think when we meet with NMFA, we want to talk about that. We want to talk about our convention center, visitor's center. There are a couple of things on the agenda that we want to talk about. But I think that we'll find out in the special session where we wind up with the law enforcement protection funds or the fire fund. I think there's some unknown issues there now, but certainly, NMFA is as good of information as anybody does right now and what's going to happen. And so, I think we would talk to them about financing those police vehicles during the upcoming year.
But you're, you're not counting on any kind of extra income that would not be a grant or a loan to offset the purchases?
There would just be that loan through NMFA, and there would be a process involved in that. And what we heard at the district meeting is it's likely going to be September or October until we can even take that step. And so, NMFA would have a process with a loan, and we'll be a couple of months into the budget before really this, this cash flow situation straightens itself out. So, it's going to be down the road a little bit when we bring this back to the commission. We do anticipate that action. That's definitely something that we need. We have added some officers in the department, and we've needed that for a while. And the, as far as budget impact with police officers goes, we need the, we need the police officers, and we'll see an increase in who we're paying and some of their related costs. But we should see a decrease in overtime as well. And right now, we're seeing a lot of overtime with certain officers. And of course, that's, there's a downside to that, just with the stress level of the officers.
Right.
But when, one of the associated expenses with that is equipping those officers. So, there's a lot that goes into that, from the uniform to the police car. So, as we've had some, some lock-in staffing up in the department, we also face associated costs.
Michael Ann, what did we get for a community assistance check from last?
Small cities assistance?
Yes, small city.
It was a hundred and seventy.
That's close enough. Hundred and seventy, and you budgeted two hundred thousand for this next fiscal year?
We did. We received a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
You budgeted a two-hundred K.
Yeah.
Part of that was just, we felt a little bit more optimistic with what we've been hearing about oil and gas. They're actually doing some drilling in New Mexico. Exxon also acquired quite a bit of land and stuff in southeast New Mexico. So, I think that the hundred and seventy-seven thousand is. the 177,000 is probably a low, and I feel pretty optimistic that we'll see-
About the 200,000, okay.
I think we will see more in this next fiscal year.
Okay.
I mean, you may disagree with me, but I just rely on what I've been seeing in the news as far as oil and gas.
That is a tough one to call.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Very tough one to call.
But yeah, that one's always kind of the wild card. You know, the year before that, we received 185,000, and the year before that, 691,000, so.
Well, that was-
Yeah.
That one's not going to happen again.
Never, never. No, we'll never see that again.
When the legislators read that report, they-
But I think we've, we've seen it even in the $300,000 range. So I think 200,000's fairly conservative.
As confident as you can about that projection.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I will move the adoption of fiscal year 17-18 interim budget for the City of Raton. I guess we have a-
And I guess if you want to do that with the changes and the actions-
Yeah, with the changes.
-taken on the lodgers tax.
Roll call vote, please. We'll just take the city first, and then-
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Sagada?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes. Now we could go on to Raton Water Works and then to RPS.
Mayor, just general comments on the Raton Water Works. We do have Mr. Campbell here from Raton Water Works. I know a couple of Commissioners have sat through the board meetings in preparation of the budget. You see a $3.8 million budget for Raton Water Works. I think it reflects the changes that we see around town and in general society of the demand for, for water. We've generally seen a decrease in water sales over some time, and we're still seeing that decrease. And I think it's for a number of reasons. We have had vacancies, first and foremost, but I think that as far as use of potable water for irrigation, we're seeing less of that. We're seeing less water applied to lawns around town and more yards that are just not maintained. We're, we're seeing the effect of water-efficient appliances also. So I think it's a variety of reasons. I think the one cent is fairly strong so far, and we'll be talking about, you know, what happens in the one-cent GRT in the coming years as well. But we do have Mr. Campbell available to provide any detailed information that you might be looking for.
As you can see, it is a, over the last several years, it's been relatively flat. Even some of our projections, we've been able to hold expenses down because revenues haven't even what we projected in the past. You've been overlooking that close to over the last three years, haven't reached the level we would expect. Solid waste is about to catch up with water and sewer. This is, this is continuing forward, just based on the usage and stuff. As you can see, a large portion of that outside of the one cent is actually what's collected, that transfers over to the city. Water use is not only, conservation is actually, you know, some of what, we've lost some homes and stuff in town, but also a lot has changed in the last 20 years. Virtually every appliance and toilet, everything you've got uses half of what it used to use. There's also not as much irrigation, to where a lot of those issues have shown up at both ends, at the water and wastewater treatment facility. But at both of them, we still are at all-time lows. Some of that's actually a reflection of Raton's population as we've gone through some tough times. And you're looking at a treatment plant that we don't see three million gallon days anymore. 1998 is reliably, I don't know, we went through 98 million gallons, and that filter plant in one month. We don't see 50 to 60 now. That is not all just usage. That's what has changed. Reclaim projects in town have done a lot of that. We did, used to have a power plant that actually had some use. But also, even at the wastewater facility, and the new facility we've got uses a lot less water, to where even the pool, actually, to where, I mean, everything's gone. It's town's gone through its changes. That reduction's taken place, but at the same time, it actually has also on the, to the citizens, actually, as we do have some vacant houses, but at the same time, each house is using less. As the state compares that out, they're actually averaging their usage is about 6,000 gallons. There is some increase in that, depending on what kind of irrigation you have. But all the way across, even our non-revenue uses, it's dropped to where we've seen that. But it, it has had an effect on revenue. Every utility's seeing that. But at the same time, it is a limited resource, so that's not necessarily a bad thing.
And I would just add that the costs of operating the system have really not gone down. As we've talked about with the filter plant, we have new rules or relatively recent rules. We're seeing the level of, of treatment go up. We're seeing that at the sewer treatment plant as well. I think that Water Works is doing it with fewer employees. That's one place that they're holding the line on expenses. But outside of those costs, the cost of running the utility has done nothing but go up.
And we typically, one point in the early, in the 1990s, we were 24 employees. We actually do it now. We run it in 10, 19, somewhere in that. We do try to stay at that level because we do have to stay in compliance with both primarily filter plant and sewer planning and continual monitoring each site. We'll be struggling with that through the next year. We actually have got some real critical people that will be retiring. Most of our chief line operators actually probably will retire in this year. The board's been working through that as we continue to go forward with it. But at the same time, regulations are something that's, you know, continually changing. Mr. Berry, we're aware, we've had several meetings with municipal assistance, trying to keep that somewhat under control. Wastewater treatment is the wildcard on the future that's continually changing, even with our new facility. We call it our new facility, believe it or not. That's 10 years old now. It's, some treatment costs can go up quite a bit for what's discharge requirements. Water treatment is actually, at one point, is 1 into U is the clarity of the water. It's been 0.5, now it's 0.3, and that's being looked at as to what may be the future that you would have to treat in. So actually, to try to maintain those levels and actually what was required operator-wise, training-wise, it's always a struggle. Raton's probably been blessed with some local, the homegrown operators that have been here and stayed and spent their whole career here. That continuity makes operations a whole lot easier.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the 2017, 2018 proposed budget for Raton Water Works.
You'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 17-18 interim budget for the Raton Water Works. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Sagada?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Thank you. We will go on with the interim budget for Raton, Raton Public Service.
Mayor Commission, you do have Mr. Walton available here as well to talk about the process. I know a couple of you have sat in on meetings at RPS to prepare this budget. It looks like a $5.8 million budget, and I think that RPS, the big factors are the Jan Bacher unit, as, as Mr. Walton had said, is very close to commissioning. That's something that we know the necessity of that unit for the town, both the residential, commercial and our institutions, as far as having that generation option here. I think that RPS has, has followed a, a policy of modernizing some of their equipment and preparing for the future and replacing some old stuff with some new stuff. And so I think Mr. Walton would speak to the budget or answer any questions that you have.
I'll make a motion. We approve the fiscal year 2018 interim budget for Raton Public Service.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve fiscal year 17-18 interim budget for Raton Public Service. Can we roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Sagada?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
What is total budget?
5.8.
Motion passes. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend a meeting of the State Armory Board yesterday in Santa Fe. There was an item on the agenda discussing the lease of the Raton Armory, from the State Armory Board to the City of Raton. As we had talked about before, the existing lease agreement was a one-year lease agreement that expired in January of this year, and the provisions of the lease allowed for a month-to-month lease under the same terms if the lease expired. And we kind of had an agreement in principle to just let it go on that month-to-month basis. And in the end, the State Armory Board did not take action on the lease. We did talk about proposed structural changes to the building by DOS, something that they're anticipating happening, and we reported that we anticipate that would happen fairly quickly. We had talked about some of the city plans as far as development at the airport, construction of taxiway delta and related things, and it was generally a good exchange of information, but the Armory Board did not take any action. And, and we did express that ultimately, we would like to settle with the transfer of ownership of the building, and they had updated me that the lead abatement is still ongoing, and so we're working with that. I did attend a New Mexico Main Street Market Analysis Meeting. There was a person here, Keith Calstrum, from New Mexico Main Street, as far as, as well as representatives of Raton Main Street and other organizations here. And they have prepared a draft report that is entitled Market Analysis for Business Recruitment Targeting. And the timing on this is good because it does dovetail very well with the EPA Technical Assistance for Infill in Raton, a lot of the same principles there. So I think we're seeing a lot of work going on in these areas of business recruitment, business retention, downtown revitalization, and infill in some of these areas that we may have vacancies right now. So I think that's good, strong momentum for the City of Raton, and we are just seeing really good partnership from both Raton Main Street and New Mexico Main Street, a lot of effort by those groups, as well as other community partners that participated in this business recruitment. Myself and several members of staff met with Representative of Senator Udall's office. That was on May 17th. Carmela Quintana and Matt Miller were in town to see what was going on in the community. They took a lot of notes, and they will go back and report that to Senator Udall, the things that we talked about. And it's a lot of the same issues that we're discussing here, is the information that we give them. Tomorrow, there is a dam inspection scheduled. I will be attendance at for Lake Maloya, and the inspection will be conducted by the New Mexico Office of the State Engineer, their Dam Safety Bureau. It's an annual process about this time of year to inspect the dam. I would just comment on the run for the wall that's been mentioned here tonight, and I think there were more than 400 motorcycles that went through town. And just to come back to the Commission, in our follow-up to the approval that you had provided at our last meeting, there is a statewide permit that covers all of the run-for-the-wall activities. State police were very active in escorting the motorcycles. The DOT and state police had permission to close those state-owned routes, and so the city was present, participated in that, but it was covered under a statewide permit, so that turned out very well, I believe. Last thing, Mayor. Tomorrow at noon, there, there will be the beginning of the legislative special session. I did talk to Bill Fuganetti today on several things. The special session concerns mostly the budget, trying to get approval on, on a budget. There is a lengthy tax reform measure that is submitted by Representative Harper, I believe, and Bill told us that he didn't think that had much of a chance to go anywhere in a very short special session, but they will tackle the budget, so that's something we can watch for. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Mayor, we did talk about the projected costs of fireworks for the year. I believe that everybody has this proposal. It's something that we would, we have anticipated in the current year budget. My recommendation is the proposal that you see here, the amount of $11,500, that order would be placed immediately so that we are ready for, for the July. So just to update you, there were several proposals provided. This is kind of the middle-of-the-road proposal, and to update the Commission, that's my recommendation to you. I don't think there's any action anticipated here, but that's the path that we've planned following. I don't know if that's the amount that is in the current budget, but it's ballpark. That's about where we're at. Okay, so we'll proceed with that.
I think it's good.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before this body? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.